Welcome to the October 28, 2008, meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Please join the board and I as we salute the flag and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, I want to welcome all of those that are here this morning. We're usually not that exciting here, but there must be something on this agenda that people want to talk about. So I would like to go to item number one. I have a staffer that wants to do a presentation, but I would like to say that although this does say we're going to do this, it is a...do what? Well, I know, he's going to wait until I'm finished. Thank you Supervisor Cox. We placed this on the board, I mean, I placed this on the agenda because it's really about, it's a discussion. It's, we don't do these things behind closed doors. And so, as the board knows, that each of us has opportunities to put things on the agenda and that goes through the chair. So basically, what Eric will present in a minute, but what I'm asking the board to do, we do have an ordinance that we would have to make an exemption to, but sometimes things are just the right thing to do. And I'm sure there's a legal way for us to make an exemption. I haven't studied it thoroughly, but it's only the law.
It's your policy, you can change it.
Thank you. It's our policy, we can change it. So basically, this morning's discussion, because I believe, as I said, that this is the right thing to do and nothing or no one could be more deserving, that's what this morning's discussion is going to be. So I wanted to correct that just item agenda because it says we're going to do it, we're actually going to discuss it, but then we have an opportunity to do that should we choose to. Mr. Coyne, did you want to present something this morning? Because you didn't trust me to do it?
Good morning. Judge William Silveira Jr. retired in 2005 after serving 29 years on the bench of Tulare County. Judge Silveira focused much of his judicial career on family and youth issues. During the more than 10 years that Judge Silveira dedicated himself to youth issues, he gained both local and national recognition. In 1995, Judge Silveira instituted one of the nation's first juvenile drug courts. His juvenile drug court program was designated a model youth drug court by the National Association of Drug Courts. Judge Silveira is known to work closely with the Tulare County Board of Supervisors, the county's administrative officers, and state legislators. In doing so, he helped pass a bill allowing construction of a new juvenile detention center in Tulare County. Judge Silveira also actively promoted Measure J, a half-cent sales tax measure that raised more than $35 million, more than $28 million for the construction of the new juvenile detention and court facility. Judge Silveira dedicated many hours to educating the community on juvenile justice needs, in part by addressing civic groups and running full-page newspaper letters to the public at his own expense. Measure J passed and the facility opened in 1999. Judge Silveira's commitment to youth includes many hours off the bench as well. He was a founding director and past director of Pro Youth Visalia and has served on civic boards in the city of Tulare and on the boards of youth-oriented organizations in Visalia. In recognition of Judge William Silveira Jr.'s years of dedicated service to the youth of Tulare County, it is recommended that the Tulare County Juvenile Justice Center and Tulare County Juvenile Detention Facility be renamed the William Silveira Jr. Juvenile Justice Center. The naming of the facility requires an exemption, exception to Administrative Regulation 12, the policy for naming any and all public facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. So I think now would be the time for some discussion by the board if there's any comments. I would, as I stated before, I've not discussed this with you, with the rest of the board. I have spoken with others about it, but I'd also like to say that I didn't speak to the judge about it. I didn't want him, give him an opportunity to say no, for one thing, because, because he's a person that believes, I think, in the youth so much of this county that I don't know that, I know for a fact that all the work that he's done has not been about honor and glory. It's been done because he deeply cares about the community. So I didn't want to give him a chance to be humble and say, "No, don't do this." Not that he would have, I don't know, I haven't talked to him about it. But gentlemen, I would be interested in your thoughts.
Chairman, before we begin, what is our policy currently about naming of buildings?
It simply says, Mr. Supervisor, that you do not name county facilities after individuals.
Although we have the, we have the former sheriff-
The Bob Wiley Detention Facility.
... which is named after-
I believe this ordinance came after that fact.
And it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
So you can just decide to make an exception.
Okay, makes it easy enough. Thank you Supervisor Worthley, you are our legal expert on the Board of Supervisors, or so, or so you've convinced us.
Madam Sheriff, if I may speak to the policy, I know we had this issue one other time here in my short term on, on the board, and at that time felt that it deserves some looking into. So I have no problem with, with even changing that policy permanently. And as I look around the community, just not at the distinguished crowd here today, but as I look around the community as a whole, I don't really see anybody more deserving than Judge Silveira as we, as we sit here today to have something like this named after him. So I wholeheartedly support, you know, this action today, because I really feel that there is no one more deserving, given the time that he has put in and, and given to the youth of this community, actually to the youth, just not here, but to the youth everywhere. So I wholeheartedly support this.
Thank you Supervisor. I'm seeing some nodding down at the end.
Madam Sheriff.
Supervisor Ashida.
When I asked a candidate for this office, I sat down with Judge Silveira, and because he's recognized as the leading person in juvenile justice, and I was quite impressed with his dedication to the issue of juvenile justice, and not only the justice part, is the prevention side. And I believe that Judge Silveira is very deserving of this honor, and I'd be proud to support this.
Okay, I'm counting and I'm feeling good. Supervisor Ennis-
Well, I feel the same way that Alan does on this. Anybody that would spend that much time and money to see that a facility was built so that we could handle the juveniles of this county and do a better job of not only trying to save them from these gangs and things, but to promote education for them through the drug courts and stuff, what a great, great, deserving person, I believe, too. Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, I can recall before I came on the Board of Supervisors when Judge Silveira was actively campaigning for Measure J, and he came to the Rotary Club, the Dineas, as he did, I think, to every service club throughout the county. And obviously, his heart and interest in this subject and project was, was very great. I have appeared before Judge Silveira over many times in my career as an attorney. I have always found him to be a very honorable person, and as a judge, one I highly respected. And we have not always had agreements on, on this board with Judge Silveira on certain items, but that had nothing to do with his integrity, his, his personal beliefs and his, his attitude. And we obviously have known his, his greatest interests has been, have been in the youth of our community. I understand why these policies come and go, and certainly there is a great responsibility on a person having a building named after them while they're still living, because they are still living. Ask Jim Maples, Maples Academy fame in Porterville, he asked me in his best behavior, he had to leave town, in fact, because, no. So I understand the concerns. I think we all know Judge Silveira's character, and it's not a concern for me, and I would very much support this move.
Well, I appreciate that, and, and what you're saying, too, I think sometimes that's what happens. We, we do want to honor folks, but oftentimes, it's, it's an after-the-fact honor, and in this case, thus the exception, because I, if, if nothing else, it'll be a comfort to his family who, he'll have to be really on good behavior. And I noticed that they're here with him this morning, so they'll, but, you know, they'll be, we could expect nothing but, but goodness, going forward. Not that there hasn't always been, but, so Supervisor Cox, you mentioned the exemption, I mean, you would like to talk about the policy, but really, this morning, I mean, that's-
I already said all about the policy I'd like to say.
In a few weeks, you'll be able to do whatever you want with that.
In a few weeks, we'll do, we'll do something else.
But for now, just asking for an exemption and then the name.
Well, I think, I think, and I would, I would like to make the motion and move that we would rename the facility to the William Silveira Jr. Juvenile Justice Center in exception to our existing resolution.
I'll second that or third.
Okay, well, I'm going to call that a, a motion in three seconds. Oh, you have to, someone for the record who actually did the second. Well, pick one, Michelle.
Supervisor Ashida beat me by half a second.
Okay, with that, we will cast our votes, please. And the motion passes unanimously, so I think I might. I'm sure the judge might want to have something to say, or I could allow Marilyn to do it, but Judge, if you, if you would.
You don't have to fear the fact that I have two sheaves of paper. It's actually in 16-point type. By age, the type needs to get larger.
We will allow you to hold court one more time here.
I want to thank all of you for the singular honor you've conferred upon me. It is true that I strongly believe that Tulare County needed to have a new juvenile justice facility, but many shared that belief and also worked to make it a reality. This isn't the time to name names and organizations, but to them and the people of Tulare County, I say, "Thank you for the wisdom and foresight you demonstrated in supporting this very much needed project." I never had the expectation that the Tulare County Juvenile Justice Center would be given my name. When I was in the middle of my last three years of service as a Tulare County Juvenile Court Judge, a new neighbor moved into a small home with a small yard about 175 feet east of my home in Tulare. She brought with her a very large white dog, a German Shepherd Husky mix. The dog was tied to an apricot tree in the backyard of the residence and barked incessantly. I complained to the woman, as did other neighbors, but to no avail. I finally sent a formal letter of complaint to Tulare Police Department and left on a short vacation. When I returned, the dog was still there barking. I again went down to the small house and told the woman that she must do something about the situation. She adroitly made the problem mine and said that if I could find one, she would give the dog to a good home. Well, after some searching, I did find one. Danielle Carson, a group home operator in Tulare County, heard about my search, she called and told me she would take the dog. The dog was delivered, and I thought no more about the matter. Then one day, Ms. Carson invited me to visit a new group home she had leased in the foothills just south and east of Lindsay. It was a large, new, spacious place with land for animals. It was ironic that the federal government had acquired it through asset forfeiture. The owner had used the property to cook and distribute meth. Now Danielle would use the site to rehabilitate young men who had drug habits. My arrival at the place was announced by the loud barking of a dog. I could see the animal was pinned and so gave it no further thought, but Danielle asked if I had noticed the animal, and I replied I had certainly heard him. She then advised that it was the white dog that I'd wanted out of my neighborhood. I told her I was glad the dog had a good home and was a good watchdog. She then asked if I might not guess what the boys at the group, at the group home had named the dog. I could not. She then told me that the dog had been named Old Silveira. And as far as my name being given to something, I thought that was about it. So it would be a very great understatement to say that I was quite surprised last week when our presiding Judge Joe Collation and our court administrator, Lorraine Klick, told me this board was taking up this resolution today. I deeply and sincerely thank this board, Chairman Conway for introducing this issue, my presiding Judge Joe Collation, and fellow judges for their support, and our court administrator, Lorraine Klick. Finally, I want to thank my wife Marilyn for her unwavering support and confidence. She stood by me through lots of hard times. In closing, I'd like to briefly acknowledge the presence of some people who have turned out here, family members, friends, fellow bench officers, current juvenile court judge Val Salcedo, Commissioner Whitty, Judge Joe Collation, I think that's it, and Commissioner Aldridge, and, and Judge Surratt, and Judge Paul Forks. Okay. And Judge Holman, all right. And Judge Reed, thank you. All right, so thank you all for attendance. I want to introduce my family briefly, they don't have to stand, I'll just go in the order in which they are seated. Here in the blue, my mother, Sophia Silveira, my sister Gloria Hoff, my brother David Silveira, my cousin Patsy Mello, my daughter Amy Silveira, my wife Marilyn, my daughter's fiance, Jason Sherburne, my mother-in-law Teresa Burkdahl, here in the green, my sister-in-law Jean Ballantyne, and Ida Buon. Thank you.
Well, Judge Silveira, just after the information you presented this morning, I, I think it makes it even more heartfelt on the board's part that the only thing, so that Old Silveira won't be the only thing named after you. And it's great to have the members of the court and your family here this morning at this time. I'm assuming down the road sometime we'll, we'll have another gathering when we actually do some sort of unveiling, but just a thank you for all your service and all that you've done for the community. Yeah, I think we will. We're going to take five minutes just to let everybody get situated and to visit a little bit. We'll get back to more business. Item number two on our agenda this morning is a presentation that will be given by the National Parks Conservation Association, and it is an action item to approve a resolution supporting the National Parks Centennial Initiative. Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Conway, good morning supervisors. My apologies for being a little bit tardy this morning, I have an inability to follow directions, but I do appreciate the opportunity to present before you an exciting program that we really look forward to, that will bring our national parks back up to the splendor that they should be at in time for their 100th anniversary, or their centennial, in 2016. And before I touch on that, I'm just going to take a quick moment to introduce myself and who the National Parks Conservation Association is, because sometimes there is a little bit of mystery. My name is Laney Hendricks, I am the local Central Valley Program Manager for the National Parks Conservation Association, and we are a nonprofit, private organization, completely separate from the Park Service, so no, I'm not a park ranger, although I would really love to have one of those hats. But we do work very closely with the Park Service and other folks to ensure that these wonderful places that we are so lucky to have in our backyard are preserved and protected in the best interests of both the lands and the visitors. We were founded in 1919 by the first National Park Service Director and have long become America's leading voice for our national parks. Locally, I don't need to go into too much detail, I'm sure you're aware, you have a fantastic national park right in your backyard, Sequoia and Kings Canyon, actually, two national parks in your backyard, which is host to 1.5 million visitors per year, which obviously is a great fueling source to your economy, and probably is what led to the development of the Sequoia Shuttle as well. It supports roughly 2,500 jobs in the area and produces, I think, roughly $70 million in visitor spending in the area. So that's a huge impact, tremendous, not only in Tulare County, but the Central Valley as well. Unfortunately, though, this little jewel that we have tucked away in the Sierras isn't an isolated island of protection, if you will. It has numerous threats from illegal marijuana cultivation, which I'm sure you're aware of, and, and lack of funding to keep staffing levels at where they should be in order to educate our children about these great wonders, to warn visitors of any threats, to even educate our international visitors about proper food storage to keep the bears away. And these are all things we want to work on to help our national parks. Collectively, our, the national park system faces a $800 million funding backlog in terms of operational funds, and that's really starting to show on a lot of our parks, with camp rounds not being maintained, again, staffing shortages, and especially when there are threats like the illegal marijuana cultivation issue, which Supervisor Ashida knows very much about, it forces our rangers to have to go from educating our children to chasing criminals, and that's simply something that should not happen. So that's where NPCA comes in. Now, the Centennial Initiative, the resolution that you are considering today, is on the Centennial Initiative, which was set forth by the Secretary of the Interior two years ago as a way to bring those parks back up to the prime level they should be in time for their 100th anniversary. Now, it's not a tax, it's, it's not raising taxes, it's not anything like that, it's actually a matching program for working with private entities as well as a public match, and an encouragement of philanthropy through volunteerism as well. Sequoia National Park is very, up to speed is how the centennial is working, there's a side program of the Centennial Initiative called the Centennial Challenge, which they did receive some matching dollars to support their rangers in the classroom program. NPCA wants to see that this program continues all the way up and possibly beyond the centennial in 2016. So today, I'm asking for your support in a resolution so that as our national parks advocates, we can go to those legislators who make these important decisions in funding and supporting our national parks. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you. Questions or comments from board members?
I think as long as we can get by NEPA, we can do some of these things.
Is that in the resolution?
We can have a side conversation about NEPA, a long conversation. It's not easy.
Recently, I was in Reno, Nevada, on a White House conference sponsored by the President, and part of the initiative, this is part of his overall initiative, not only for the parks, for, for all public lands, and I'm very much in support that we need to bring our national parks and our public lands up to standards. Have been frankly deferred maintenance, there's a lot of deferred maintenance. So I support the resolution and make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, and as you cast your votes, Supervisor Ashida, the clerk tells me that somehow your no button is stuck, so you will probably have two-
Aye.
-votes up there. So let's cast our votes, please, and see if that actually happens. Okay.
Both ways.
That's a yes.
Yes. Well, as a person that was either making or seconding the motion, but I just wanted to warn you before that show that-
How come Cox's thing gets stuck?
I, I'm not sure. However, the resolution passes unanimously.
I use mine more often.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here with us this morning. I'm losing control.
Thank you.
Actually, item number three, I think, is just informational. Tonight at 5:00 PM will be the grand opening ceremony for the Tulare County Library Visalia Brants with the Children's Library and Expansion Project. Public hopefully is aware of this, but may or may not be. When the new annex was built, we used the original library for storage. Through the help of many partners, we combined those two and did some refurbishing, and it's absolutely beautiful. And tonight, 5:00 PM, the public is welcome and invited, will be the grand opening ceremony for that library system. So we'll now move to our 9:30 timed items. Item number four is a public hearing request from the CIO's office to review and consider information contained in a negative deck for the History of Farm Labor and Agriculture Museum project. Morning, Mr. Summers.
Good morning. Brian Summers, Senior Capital Projects Coordinator. This morning, I'm here to present the History of Farm Labor and Agriculture Museum project. The item requests that your board conduct a public hearing to certify that the California Environmental Quality Act requirements have been met, accept the bid documents, and authorize staff to publicly bid the project. The project will construct a new 17,000-square-foot museum facility on county-owned property in Moonee Grove Park, adjacent to the existing Tulare County Museum. The proposed project is consistent with general plan and zoning designations and does not require a special use permit. Local community members have been consulted, and public noticing of the project has been completed. During the public comment period, two comments were received. Both advise staff that the published notice incorrectly identified the project location as the southwest corner of Avenue 272 in Moonee Boulevard, and the correct description is the southeast corner of Avenue 272 in Moonee Boulevard. No other comments or questions were received, and the corrections to the documents were made. All other project information is correct. The Resource Management Agency has completed the environmental checklist and has determined that the proposed project will have no significant impact on the environment. Accordingly, a negative declaration has been completed and will be filed with the clerk recorder's office. The project is estimated at $3.3 million and is funded in the Capital Projects Fund. And this concludes my presentation, and if there are no questions, I would request that your board conduct the public hearing.
Okay, questions or comments from board members? All right, seeing and hearing none, then it is a public hearing.
Madam Chair, if I can, before I vote, if I could split my vote in two, I would, I would have a yes and a no vote, like Supervisor Ashida had.
Would you like to trade places with Supervisor?
We have four requests before us. If you remember correctly, or if you remember last time I voted to oppose a project because we had no clear funding source for the other nearly two or one and a half million dollars that was needed, so I am going to vote no on two, three, and four, but I will push the yes button for one.
Thank you for that explanation Supervisor, I think it really just clears everything up for all of us. Let's cast our votes, please.
But it is yes.
Okay.
My vote is yes.
Motion passes unanimously, no matter what the lighted board says. Okay. Item number five, public hearing, request from Resource Management Agency. I won't read the et al's, I'll let Charlotte do that for us. Morning.
Morning Madam Chair, Supervisors. B&amp;J Charlotte Bresuelas, RMA Project Review Planning Division. B&amp;J Lands has requested a change of zone from the C3 service commercial to the AE20 exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum zone to an M1 light manufacturing zone. The reclassification was requested and to allow expansion of an existing agriculture facility. The existing use permit allows the operation of a machine shop, a welding repair business, parking, storage, and a office for an agricultural helicopter operation. The change of zone to M1 will allow the continuation of these uses, but will also allow those uses to include manufacturing as well of equipment, non-agricultural equipment, and storage. The subject site consists of approximately 30 acres and is located at the northeast corner of County Line Road and Road 152, approximately one and a half miles east of State Route 99 north of Delano. This is the project site. The red line depicts the Delano urban improvement area, and you can see that the southern 10 acres of the site is within the urban improvement area of Delano. The site is presently zoned C3 for the southern 10 acres and AE20 for the northern, excuse me, southern 10 acres is C3, and the northern 20 acres is AE20. Surrounding properties are zoned A1 agriculture and AE20, and Kern County is located to The blue line makes up the property boundary. The majority of the area to the south within Kern County consists of residential development, however, there is a three acre vacant parcel and also a storage facility, a commercial storage facility located south of the subject site. Surrounding properties to the east and to the north and to the northeast consist of agriculture. The Madonna subdivision is located in the northeast portion, northeast of the site. And on the north side of County Line, east of the subject site, is an agriculture trucking operation as well as other commercial businesses, including a nursery, there's a church, and also consists of rural residential development. The, all uses are existing on the site, and no new development is proposed. While the AE20 zone allows manufacturing of agriculture equipment only, the C3 zone does not allow any manufacturing of equipment for distribution or retail sales. Therefore, the applicant has requested the M1 zone to be applied to the entire site. The applicant states that due to the nature of the machine shop and their customer base, like Caltrans, Delano Prison, and the city of Delano, there have been requests for specialized types of equipment to be manufactured and/or repaired, which are not agricultural related. The applicant feels there's a need for this type of manufacturing business in the area. A zone change initiation, PZI 06001, was reviewed by your board on October 24th. The applicant was allowed to file an application for a change of zone to the M2, which is a heavy manufacturing zone, but instead filed an application for a change of zone to M1, which is a less intensive zone that would still meet the requirements for his business. The Planning Commission at their regular meeting of August 13th, 2008, recommended that your board approve a modified request for a change of zone from the C3 and AE20 to M1 SR. The SR being the Site Plan Review Overlay Zone, which would allow for future review of any expansion or changes in use of the site. This graphic depicts the project site, the North Delano Study Area, County Line Service Area. At the October 24th meeting for consideration of the PZI, and by the same resolution, your board revised the study area for the North Delano Planning Area to include the subject site. However, no study has been implemented, no funds have been allocated for said study, and there are no ongoing negotiations with the city of Delano in regards to this issue. These are just pictures of the site and surrounding area. The San Joaquin helicopter office is located on this site with special use permit approval, but the helicopter is housed and maintained at an off-site location. Maintenance building, some of their buildings. This is where the equipment repair and welding manufacturing takes place at Randall Equipment Manufacturing. The closest residence to the subject site is 150 feet southwest of the corner of the site, but the closest residence to this building is 400 feet south of the site. Vacant lot adjacent to the site. This is Empire Ag Transportation, which is an adjacent commercial business, agricultural commercial business, located east, directly east of the site. And this is the CNF Fleet Card Fuel Operation, which is on the site. And this is the storage area on the northern portion of the site, off of Road 152. And pending any questions you may have, that concludes staff's report.
Questions from board members?
One quick one, I don't see an RVVP checklist. Is there a reason why we didn't do one on the northeast parcel?
There was an RVVP checklist. The northern portions of the subject site are outside of the urban area boundary and therefore subject to the RVVP evaluation. Under the RVVP point evaluation, this portion of the site received 14 points, which means it falls within a gray area, in which there's no clearly defined decision, clearly on that site.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Alrighty, it's a public hearing, so at this time I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on this matter, now would be the time. Good morning.
I'm Bill Roberts of Roberts Engineering. We prepared the application. I think all the facts have been stated, and if you have any questions, I'm here, and Lee Brown, one of the applicants, is here to address those questions, and we would appreciate your approval. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing and hearing none, then we'll close the public hearing portion, bring it back to the board for discussion and possible action.
One quick comment, the city of Delano, one of our pages here had phone call to oppose a project, and that's all they did, so if they're not here opposing the project, it must not be that big a deal to them, so I would make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion, a second, cast your votes please. Motion passes unanimously, I'm assuming Supervisor Ashida.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next week.
Okay. Item number six, another public hearing. Change of zone.
Morning Chairman Conway, Supervisors, Nick Con, RMA Planning Division. The applicant has requested a change of zone on a 1.38 acre parcel from the AE20 exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum to C3 service commercial zone to allow an auto body repair and paint facility. The subject site is located on the north side of Avenue 416, east of Road 100 in Sultana. This aerial photograph illustrates the location of the site in relation to surrounding areas. Properties to the north and east contain a packing house, storage facility, railroad, orchard, and residential. Properties to the west include residential and orchard. The BASF Agricultural Chemical Research Facility, agricultural and scattered residential use are located to the south of the site. This slide shows an aerial view, a little bit closer distance. The site and surrounding properties are zoned AE20. The property was purchased, assuming that it was zoned for commercial use because the previous owner reportedly used the site to operate an automotive repair facility. Upon discovering the existing zoning did not allow the desired use of the site, the applicant submitted a zone change initiation. The zone change initiation was submitted prior to the issuance of any violation. This photograph was taken approximately one week ago and shows the shop building looking north from Avenue 416. This photograph shows the eastern side of the shop building. A portion of the cold storage and packing facility is seen in the background, north of the subject site. The site is within the Rural Valley Lands Plan, which designate site as agricultural. The site is not within existing urban development or urban area boundary. Outside urban area boundaries, the RVVP is a controlling factor for approval or denial of urban type development. Under the RVVP point evaluation system, the subject site scored 12 points. Since points are less than 17, the site could be considered for rezoning to a non-agricultural The Planning Commission at their regular meeting of July 23rd, 2008, modified their request and recommended a change of zone to C3 SR. The SR overlay would require a site plan review for any changes to the subject site. There's been no opposition to the proposal. And subject to any questions you may have, this concludes staff report.
Questions, board members?
Just one clarification, you indicate there's a railroad site, it's actually an abandoned railroad, doesn't longer exist. The, I support the proposal, my only question is that the place has been kind of not well-maintained in terms of being visually, especially on the east side, I'm sorry, the west side of the building, there's a tendency to have a lot of stuff, junk piled up and everything. Is there any way of requiring the person put in a solid fence or something to block that from the view of the road?
If there's any changes to the site, if they ask for a building permit for the subject site, there will be a required site plan review if you guys adopt the SR overlay, and at that time we can add conditions to require those types of conditions to the project.
But it would require a building permit to be pulled in order for
Yes. It is my understanding co-compliance has been working with the applicant, and they have eliminated a lot of the
I know some of those disappeared.
I had a quick question, you mentioned that the site reportedly contained an automobile shop before, so I mean, it did, or it didn't, or it was not commercial, was it just used by the previous owner for his own equipment, or?
My understanding, it was reportedly used by the previous owner, and that's what the applicant had stated. There was no confirmed use of that type.
Let me give you the history, because I
Supervisor Worley may be ready to confirm.
This was my father-in-law's shop, and it was used for ag equipment, manufacturing, and storage, for construction purposes, manufacturing purposes. And then he sold it to a company that built the packing house on the other side of the property. They turned around, I believe, and leased it to someone who did use it for automobile repair and paint shop, they'd been, had been existent for some time before, apparently the property changed hands again, so that's what it was used for.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, comments? Nope, well, it's a public hearing, so we will do that now. Open the public hearing for anyone wishing to comment on this. Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for
Approval, Miss Chairman. Madam Chairman.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. I believe the motion passes unanimously, thank you Supervisor Ashida.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to move to the consent counter, however, we have some corrections. We would like to, I mean, item 10 will be pulled, item 19 will be pulled, and item 22 will be pulled for discussion. The other two are pulled and off, 22 is just pulled out for separate discussion.
Motion approved, consent counter, as amended.
Second.
A motion and a second, cast your votes please. Okay. Whoa.
It worked.
Fixed it.
It healed itself.
Thank you.
She disabled your no button.
Okay. Item 22, looks like we're going to hear that separately.
Good morning, House Cyper, Resource Management Agency Assistant Director for Support Services, Madam Chair, members of the board, CAO. On item 22, which is the Visalia District Office relocation from its current location out to the 1845 North Dinuba Boulevard, at the last minute, after the documents had been reviewed and approved to form and signed off by the property owners along with County Council, the lender, the owner's lender had an issue with an item. That issue has been resolved late last week. What we are requesting is that you move approval for this and allow the chair to sign the documents after they've been approved or formed by County Council.
Okay, questions?
No subs, no change of substance or anything?
No substantive change.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, cast your votes please.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Mr. Cyper. Okay. Item 27, public comments. Anybody wishing to address the board on items that are purview but not on the agenda, now is the time. Okay, seeing and hearing none, move to item 28, any board of supervisors manage this morning?
I'd just like to say something on our last conference, our nine-county conference, we did introduce a resolution supporting efforts to get some management back into our state and federal lands, and it was passed unanimously by all nine counties. So we're getting our voice heard, we're starting to be heard on this issue, and hopefully we'll stop spending these billions of dollars on trying to fight fires. We'll be proactive and go in and try to do things to eliminate these fires from becoming catastrophic. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisors. Supervisor Ashida? Supervisor Worley?
Well, I can't go by without mentioning last night's step-up event, and Phil Cox and company had, were actively involved in the process, and the city of Dinuba already took the lead on the project. And I think unfortunately, we didn't have quite the turnout we expected, but the events and Cutler-Rosi in Cutler-Rosi over the weekend, where we had three different shootings, including six injured people shot and three fatally, probably had an impact on the number of people who showed up. Cutler-Rosi had planned to send a busload to the event. They did not. And I'm sure other folks decided to rather stay home than take some kind of risk. But it was very quiet. We had a tremendous amount of people there, in uniform, police, sheriff, explorers, and so forth, and we had no problems. We had a great speaker. I'm sorry, more people couldn't hear him. A young professor at University of California, Barbara, who was a former gang member, and his message was very well-received, connected very well with the audience. And so my thanks to Phil and to Jed and hard work that was put in, and they've got this thing down now to kind of like a science, so it moves along pretty well.
Supervisor? Supervisor Cox?
All I've got is that was the safest place to be in Tulare County last night. Although it wasn't an overwhelming presence, it was a safe presence. And I feel the same as Supervisor Worley. I feel a lot of people did miss out on Dr. Rios's, you know, his talk, because he's a very talented public speaker and had a wonderful message to deliver about how important it is to find a mentor, or adult, someone to help you achieve your goals as a young person. And when he concluded, probably 15 or 20 young people came from the top of the stands down into the stadium to meet him and thank him for being there. That, for me, that was the success of the evening, is to see that he touched the hearts of probably, you know, 15 or 20 young people that were looking. So, great event.
Can we tape his presentation?
No.
Okay. We'll just have to invite him back again.
I think we're not allowed to tape their presentations.
I would have asked him.
I believe it was, you know, he's, he charged to come to the event, so I'm sure there's some control over his
Always give him rights. Every time we show this to him. Okay, thank you for that. Really, we've already talked about the opening at the library this evening. Open house at 5:00 p.m., and I want to thank the board again for support on the renaming this morning. I appreciate that very much. Counsel, before I ask you about closed session, did you have an urgency item that you wanted the board to consider?
I do. Madam Chairman, we became aware yesterday of a new purb charge filed by SEIU Local 521 against the county of Tulare. It is purb number SA-CE-570-M. Apparently was filed on October 22. The substance of this charge is that the county has unreasonably delayed the calling of an agency shop election for SEIU. Given that there is an organizational meeting regarding calling that election with SEIU and State Conciliation Mediation Service tomorrow, it's obvious that your board needs to act and give direction on that today. So I'd ask that your board consider adding that item to your closed session agenda.
Okay.
Who?
Second.
Second. Cast your votes, please. Passes unanimously, added to the closed session. So then, while we're on the subject, other items?
In addition to that, we have items A and D through I on your board's closed session agenda. Items B and C are off agenda, and I do anticipate an announcement.
Okay. With that, thank you for being here with us this morning. The board will now adjourn to closed session.
Announcement on a closed session today, Tuesday, October 28, by Kathleen Balesang, County Council, in the matter of the item added to the board's agenda today as an urgency item, SEIU versus county of Tulare purb charge, SA-CE-570-M. The board voted to authorize a defense of that action on the motion of Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Ennis on a 5-0 vote. There are no other announcements.